All right, it's 6:00 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. Clerk may have a roll call and an establishment of a quorum.
Isaiah Crowe?
Here.
Mary Beth Shaw?
Here.
Barb Stotts?
Here.
Matt Crowe? Dylan Helmenstein?
Here.
Angie Wolf?
Yes.
You're present as well?
I'm present.
Great. Um, I approve of posting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
And I vote yes as well. Right. And we do have a member from the community signed up in public opinion to speak today. And so just a reminder, I know you're familiar with this. You'll have two minutes to stand and share anything with us that you would like. And if it is not on the agenda, we can't comment it in public opinion, but we can later share something during that part of the agenda if warranted.
Okay.
So Joe, you want to stand up and then just tell the group what municipality you reside in?
I'm Joe Schwartz from the Town of Mar. Uh, I was here to talk about trap pay. Is that one of the topics tonight? Uh, one of the things I was wondering is if this is a position that they're going to pay for, is it going to be posted to the public? Is it required to be posted to the public? A little bit of what I have is with my history with running, my kids being in trap for like last six years and running archery for six years. One of the issues I have, I've got an issue with it because nobody in six years has ever reached out to me and asked me if I ever needed anything, much less a dollar. And I don't think anybody in the community has tried to grow the trap club as much as I have with, I know we've got all the administration. We're on the fourth different athletic director in six years. And there's no communication between the old trap club and the administration. So I was always trying to be the middle man to grow the trap club. So it kind of felt like a little hurtful when I saw that, that they're proposing to pay the guys that just basically just wrote their own ticket. So, uh, I have some notes here, but I had some questions as to what it takes to maybe get the archery club coaching position paid, seeing how the trap club is talked about being paid. So I get rid of your responsibility. Sorry.
You're doing great. It's fine.
I think that's about it.
Yeah. Thanks, Joe. And like we always say, um, if there are things that deserve follow-up, which it sounds like there are, then they'll go through the avenues. Melissa's here and Michelle, obviously, is here. And so you'll probably get a follow-up on some of those. And if you have further questions, you can feel free to shoot them off in an email too and kind of start that conversation.
Yeah, I emailed some questions today. We're going to get the answers, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. All right. Moving on, minutes in payroll. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of January 13th, 2025?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. Isaiah?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
I vote yes as well. All right, moving on to district business. Board President Report. Um, I just want to thank Dylan and Matt, who isn't here tonight. Um, and Michelle and I were at the State School Board Convention for a few days last week and just in recognizing um, a board norm that we established of our own continuing education. It was a really good few days to collaborate and um, see that working districts and school boards all over the state are much more alike than we are different. We share a lot of the same challenges and are obviously aligned with student focus first. And so we're able to really share and collaborate together about creative ways and dealing with those. And so we will come back and share at a later time. But I just wanted to give that to our group efforts then. And then we also had our first steering committee meeting last week, I believe, the week's or the previous? The week was there. Um, but we have a terrific group of people leading the charge in that steering committee. And so it's really exciting to get that off, um, running. And jokingly, we're going to need all the meetings that we have scheduled until April because not shocking, it's a very lively, random, spontaneous group that um, love talking and um, but really focused in understanding what's expected of them. And so it's going to be a really good group. And then the only other thing I have tonight is to award our Vanguard Spotlight recipient for the month of January. So I'll invite Alyssa, Megan, Shay down. Here, remember, we stood.
You were in front of us.
How do you want us to face?
Face the camera.
Block.
No, I know. And so just to remind everyone, um, the school board really just wanted to use this public stage as a way to acknowledge and recognize all the wonderful things going on in our district and recognize the staff members who are a part of that. There are so many wins on a daily basis that we don't get to celebrate. And so this is a small way of using the stage to do so. Um, and so we have two members of our school community here to talk about why, um, they nominated Alyssa. So I'll give the floor over to them.
Yes, I want to go first. I think you're a little bit more well-spoken, so. I had to write there one of the things about Grayson and Mrs. H. So Grayson is 12, almost 13. Yep. He's diagnosed with autism and has only been going into the school at the Heights after years of in-home therapy. We lived in the school district and that we did not feel comfortable placing him until we met with Mrs. H. Um, on that note, to the board and guests and everybody, just want to take a moment to publicly thank her for all of her hard work and care that you put into Grayson's academics. It is so very clear how much you truly care about him and all of your students. We have seen so much growth in him thanks to your guidance and your mentorship to other, your peers. You make it feel like Grayson is your priority, but you do that for all of your kids. Without you, we do not think he would have been as successful. You've taken the most vulnerable in our society and protected and cared for him, and this we are forever grateful to you.
Thank you. And not one, we have two, so.
So I nominated Alyssa as well. Um, my nomination was like a bush lawn, so I'm not going to read that all. Don't worry about that. But Alyssa worked with both of my kids at Mesa Elementary. And then she had Asher out at the new elementary school. Um, and I loved seeing when we had students last month come and nominate their teacher, but some of our teachers work with kids who can't do that. Like my kids cannot come and share what Miss H has meant to them. So that is why I am here. Um, Alyssa, no, I'm sorry. Alyssa saw my kids through the hardest years of their schooling because she got them in COVID, non-speaking kids who had never left Black Earth Elementary. And um, my oldest did okay, my youngest, not so much. And he had PTSD from COVID. And I am so grateful that Alyssa saw past the behaviors and realized that that is not him. That is not who he is because she could have written him off really easily. And she stuck by him, got him through Mesa, got him to a great place, got him to transition here. And even now with them being in high school and middle school, whenever we have even the flight's challenge, she's the first person I go to and she brainstorm's with us because she knows the boys so well. Um, I think Alyssa is one of those teachers where if you have her for a year, you have her for life because she's always one call away, literally. And now as a sub, I get to come see her doing that with all of these other kids. And she had a real tough caseload this year, learning whole new grade levels and whole new kiddos. And the way you do it is amazing. And I'm just so happy that those kids now get to benefit from you the way our family does. So I just think we are so lucky to have her in our district. And your kids may not be able to tell you it, so us parents will. You mean the world to us and we couldn't imagine.
That was beautiful. Okay, so with immense gratitude and appreciation, the Wisconsin Heights School District recognizes your passion and excellence in inspiring and supporting members of our school community. So congratulations.
Thank you, thank you so much.
One more. I'll take one. And now we're going to get a group picture if we could, all right? Well, let's go up.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, it's about you. Well deserved, Alyssa. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All done.
And you know, guys, just side note, thanks for communicating so much on Friday. Thanks for keeping us updated and everything else. So that was appreciated.
Alyssa, I owe you a hug when I'm not sick. Otherwise, I'd be giving you a hug too.
See you, I feel like I'm some adventure. We are as well, so, but thank you. This is really a relational job and that's what, it's what matters at the end of the day, right? So.
So thankful for you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Megan.
Way to get that started, Barb.
I know.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
Really good stuff. So that is a good reminder for everybody listening to get in your nominations. Moving on, 4.2, Michelle's report.
Say, it's hard to follow that.
I know.
So um, celebrations, I mean, I'm just, and so with my report that was submitted actually last week, so I'm going to just go over a couple of things, some highlights that same celebrations that Barb mentioned, just the strategic planning and state convention, some of the challenges. So when I wrote this last week, just working through what the tragedy that happened in our parking lot a couple of weeks ago and how our team came together and really looked at rethinking our parking lot and the safety that is involved. And so some of the really key things that our team has done is looked at different traffic patterns. So now especially for the middle and high school, we have pickup where the elementary school that roundabout is. We have our fearless admin team out there with us crossing guards and being just out there as another set of eyes to really direct kiddos where they need to be. I would say it's still a work in progress. We're still having conversations about how to make that better, more effective. But all sorts of things around safety that we're continuing to have conversations about and that our team has been really vigilant about. So grateful for them. Other things, I will say we, another thing when it comes to security that we've really embraced is just our cybersecurity. And so we've been working with an organization called Dependable Solutions to look at that piece within our district. And so Dale's had, Dale has headed that up with our tech folks. And so lots of things that are coming to fruition right now. And I'll share probably more detailed um, report on that. But we're very excited that they're here helping us. We have, we sent out a admin team and board survey to the community and got a lot of great people to give us some feedback. And so just I wanted everyone to know that, you know, thank you for those of you that did fill that out to give us that feedback. And then our team is going to be meeting and we're going to be using that feedback. And then we'll report back to the community to say, hey, here's what we learned, here's what we're going to do differently, things like that. If you go into high-quality instruction, so one of the things, I have highlighted PLC work and our calendar. So one of the things Dale and I are working on, or our whole team is looking at, is next year and maybe possibly altering the calendar to get us some more minutes or to, in order to have some more PLC time for our admin. So we're, we have some ideas that we'll be bringing to the board in the future, but we're definitely looking at some creative ways to add some more minutes so we have some more PLC time for our folks. And then the safe community piece. So we're still working with a couple other vendors, some groups to come in and give us bids on that front entrance, secure front entrance. We should have that moved up in the month of February. And then that will be coming to the board for their vote to, as to which um, group that we go with. But like I said, it's, school safety is most definitely a priority and something that we are constantly talking about and moving, figuring out ways to have, make our environment safer for our kiddos. And lastly, community involvement and communication. Career fair, February 13th.
Brian Lassman.
So thanks to Dale, he's done an extraordinary job getting that, you know, promoting it, getting people signed up. I think we've got a really good group and more coming in.
29 vendors so far.
Wow. Great.
Yeah, so that's exciting. And then we also, um, I've had a chance, Barb couldn't make that meeting, but to get once again together with our village leaders, our village presidents, just to talk about future collaborations. And we're going to keep that going and meet monthly just to talk more about how we can work together. So that is what I have.
Great. Any questions? Okay, great, thank you. All right, moving on, district business. 5.1, um, we do have a first reading. And so the attachment has an overview of the changes for policy volume 33, number two. And so our second reading will um, be coming up and then for approval on February 10th. So this is just a first reading. Any questions? Anything there for a first reading? Okay, again, um, if you do have questions in the meantime, feel free to email those out. And again, our approval will be on February 10th. Moving on to 5.2. Do you want to talk about the changes to the policy first before we, is this a field trip? Yeah, field trip.
Yeah, absolutely. So we, so the, when we, we actually talked about this policy before and we forgot a couple of key pieces. So we didn't have it, the dates lined up per se. So if you see the, what I attached, so you can see what I bolded or what we bolded. So the pre-approval, so ultimately, there's a two-step process. So that's what we created, was a two-step process for field trips. But we just didn't have the, like, the timeframe for it to add up. So what we've now included is pre-approval for in-state and adjoining state overnight field trips happen within three months prior to the trip. So the pre-approval is, you know, reaching out, you know, working with Melissa or Sarah or building administration to say, here's what we want to do. So that pre-approval first happens. And then the final approval is 45 days prior to the trip. And then that's when they would present to the board. And so that would be for in-state, adjoining state overnights. Are those the three months in the 45 days? Originally, we had just put more or less the out-of-state in, out of the country, so we could just keep 12 months because that's not realistic. So we just needed to include that other piece. So if you're taking a trip out of, out of the state or out of the country, it's a 12-month pre-approval. And then, as you can see, two months prior to the trip is where they come to the board for final approval. And then have, nothing else has changed, although everything's the same. It's just making it clearer as to the timeframes.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the changes to the field trip policy?
Second.
All right, hearing done. Isaiah?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. All right, 6.1. Do I have a motion to approve the transfer of money from Middle School Cheer to Trap Club?
So second.
And so I think just to get clarity on a couple of things, to your point, Joe, um, we don't currently have a middle school trap club. It's archery.
We don't, we have, we don't have, you appro, we have, the trap club is 612.
Oh, that is, okay.
So it's going to Middle School Cheer, which we have not had for a long time.
To 612 trap club.
Yes.
And then the archery is separate.
Archery club is separate.
Is separate.
Yes. And I, I had sent an email this morning about setting up a time with you to sit down and talk about things with that.
Yeah, so certainly, um, we were just talking about this and we were talking about facility usage and things in the community and stuff. There are so many things that we don't necessarily know about. And I know there are a lot of extracurriculars and clubs and advisors and volunteers, and that's partially why we're trying to get better wraps of the co-curricular code and, and a full list of things. And so I think this is an opportune time to acknowledge maybe certain clubs and people that are out there doing great work that we don't know of. And so it, it sounds like that conversation is underway. And certainly if it's an established club and there's funding and you're a volunteer that would like to an advisor role, and that's conversations that will happen, so.
I think you make a very good point though.
Yeah.
Like if we have a pay, I think when we first had the conversation, it was volunteer. And then the board, we decided, oh, let's, how can we get some money? You know, it doesn't make sense to have people volunteer. And so you make a very good point that if it is a paid, is if it's a paid position, is it something that needs to be posted?
Because I might have applied to be this.
Right, yeah, so. I'm glad you brought that up.
And I told podium help, but I'm going to help them out as much as needed. So that's what I'm saying, like, if it was posted, I might apply.
Right.
So that's why I'm part of it and feel like those are fair.
Yes.
Especially for, since somebody has tried to grow that trap club for 30 years.
Yeah, and I think that is the funding. We've talked about that before.
And then why trap, why not a different club?
Sure. When there are vacancies or new clubs, what are the procedures in place to go about?
Well, why pay trap when they haven't even been around? And there's other clubs that have been around. Archery club. So why donate the money?
I think what we can do better as a district is, I think the board especially now is, is open to these opportunities for our students. And I think it's just our job to communicate that better with the folks who are volunteering, with the folks that are willing to do this work. From my perspective, I can only speak in my perspective as a board member, it's because we've had some folks very interested and very willing to do this type of work. And we're happy to work with folks who are doing that. So you're coming to us now, and I think I, as a board member, am open to working with you as well, with archery group, Spanish club, with all those folks, to make sure the opportunities we do provide to our students are supported by the board.
Yeah.
And transparency for everything. I mean, that's in part to this co-curricular thing is, is identifying who's out there, who's giving their time, what are the expectations of advisor roles, how much time is put into all this? I mean, there's so much that again, it's just transfer of knowledge. We don't know, but also transparency for the public. You've never been out there to know, these are our opportunities. These are those individuals that are heading it and spearheading it, giving their time, the allocation of funds. Where are those appropriate? And um, that was definitely, I think, went into giving advisor pay is saying, we can't expect the sustainability of these programs to indefinitely exist with volunteers. It's just, you know, and so I thank you for coming. Because again, there are plenty of things that we're not aware of. And so, yeah, it sounds like the conversation's off to a good start though. And thank you for coming and speaking.
Great. Yeah, and we might have, so when we get to the point where we were going to approve the hire of the trap coaches, we might have to let, yeah, table it or have a discussion. Because if this conversation needs to continue, then you can't really word on that tonight.
Yeah, like I said, I don't think it's fair that it can be posted to the public if you're going to pay it to somebody. I don't know if that's policy or not. Maybe it's not policy to have to do that, but.
It's a paid position, it has to get posted.
New, new organization or not, right? I don't think that's what was kind of, oh, well, it's something new and we can just create it, but new or old, right?
Yeah.
It's a paid position.
Right. And I'll be honest, it's a misstep on my part because I think, I was like, yeah, that makes sense, yeah, let's pay them. And we didn't do our due diligence to say we need to do that, so. We'll make it right.
And also I can see to, I mean, you are in the minority, the people coming out of the woodworks to volunteer and that are getting excited about, you know, helping kids are sadly in the minority. So I think anytime somebody shows up at the doorstep saying, we want this, it's like, oh, yes, please, you know? But yeah, overstep or not, we'll make it right. And thank you for bringing that to your attention.
Excellent.
The good news is, the trap club is getting some money. So we do have a motion in a second, right?
Yes.
Any other questions?
So that's approved. They get the money?
Well, almost.
Almost, we're almost there. Hearing done. Isaiah?
Uh, I have seen.
Okay, Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
So it's okay, I'm so, yes.
So that was just that we were allocating funds from a previous club that was in place, Middle School Cheer.
Okay.
So that was already in the budget for that programming that no longer exists.
Sure.
So that's just getting allocated to the fund of the trap club.
How does that work? How did you choose trap club?
Can we wait to have that discussion when we get to the positions?
How you just choose one club to get money to?
I think there's, I think there's separate, um.
I guess I didn't realize I was part of even trap the money because that's another thing, so how do you choose that?
Do you want to talk about how that came about?
I mean, because I feel like the archery club is funded the school. We paid for Mr. Pooks to get trained. We paid for equipment for the gym classes to use. Like, we funded some of this, and we don't get anything. Nobody in six years is going, Angel, so how can I help you? Much less said, can I give you any money? So how do they get cheer money when they haven't even done anything yet?
At the last meeting, the coaches who were here were promised they would be paid. So that is why that money went from one organization where we had it to another.
I think to his point though, and clearly, obviously, this field that's how we fund the trap club. And.
We emailed this morning for you to come into the.
Great. I can't come in and choose, you're going to come and practice anyway.
We can work out a timeline if this is. We can work out a timeline if this is.
And Michelle will be happy to join you as well, because, to your point, that's not okay, right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why, they just all seem to get, I don't know what the point is, but it probably got allocated to them, and nobody else got a shot at it.
It's kind of in any department, though, right? If it's not fair that you're having to solely fund an opportunity for our kids when other funding is being allocated, so. I think it's almost a step, and I understand why you feel slighted. But in this case, it was, okay, we have this new club, where are we finding the funding? Well, we no longer have cheer, so this is pulling funds from that, rightfully so, not even in anybody's view that, well, maybe we should allocate some funds to the, to the archery club.
Was it not in the very beginning when they approached trap club, they said they were going to fund themselves? Was that not one of the, like, bulletins?
This is for the coaches' stipends.
Are there, so it doesn't, I, I do think we need to look at yours as well, and look at how do we make that work, and let's see if we could.
What complicates this a little bit more is, they came and said they would do it volunteer. The board decided that that wasn't appropriate to start a program and not have some sort of stipend pay be tied to it, just in terms of sustainability, that if they quit, and it's not already built into the budget that we did do our due diligence saying, we're going to fund this somehow, and then they said that they might, we said, you can do whatever you want with the money. If you want to use some of that money towards funding your programming or buying equipment, that you would then take out of your own pay, that's your thing, right? So, so maybe it's getting.
Is there confusion, is there funding that's going to the club and funding that's going to the coaches? Is it two different, or is it just funding to the coaches?
Just funding coaches.
For the coaches, correct.
That's where I got a little confused there.
Correct, and how, I guess, how individuals choose to use that money is then on the discretion of the individual.
Sure. Yeah, it's their money, they do what they want.
Correct, yeah.
I, I get it.
So that's getting twisted, if they said they might fund.
Because I thought you were giving the club itself some money, and then you were going to give the coaches some money in that one.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I was like, how do they get money?
Correct, yes. But if you did get your own money, Joe, then you could allocate it, however you.
No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
This is, this is a great discussion point, I mean, and these are things that we continue to learn as we, you know, get deeper into with all, every, every new season, there's a new club or organization, and it's like, oh, let's have those larger conversations, so.
Great.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they just approved to fund the coaches, right?
Yes.
But the coaching position wasn't posted to the public.
Well, we have to approve that, yes, yes.
We got to get to that one.
We've got to attend more meetings, Joe, we're getting used to this.
But in all honesty, like, we're really grateful for this, because there's so much that we're not aware of, or, or the Lions, and rather than getting mad outside of this and, and having some, you know, pent up emotions, thank you for coming and just opening up the conversation, and that's a great start.
See trap club, yeah.
Yeah.
And can I also say, I, I just want to also say, you know, the admin are working really hard to push what the board members say we want to see, which is properly making sure folks who give time to our students are compensated fairly. It's just, you know, they're trying to do a lot of different things that, for this community, and so I want to say thank you to the admin as well for trying to pick up this piece along with it while we're trying to push it forward as well. I don't think anybody's purposely dropping any balls on that type of thing.
I just want to issue, we have the best, the administration never really talked to the former trap club, and so they always need a middle man, and that's just what's, that's kind of what we can draw on, and the administration has to talk to all the coaching personnel that better collapse.
And we're trying to close that gap, I think, in, in even having, Melissa's position is to say, it's not about athletics, our co-curricular program is so expansive that we're all one, we have the same standards and same opportunities for kids, so we're all one. So communication should be the same with advisors and coaches, you, you know, should be kind of held to the same standards in terms of coaching and teaching and all those things, so we appreciate it.
Awesome.
Yeah, so we have the transparency.
Yes, that is good.
Perfect, so six point two, Derek is here to go over our budget calendar timelines for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six.
And really, this is kind of a repeat of last year's calendar that we had kind of developed, just kind of putting it in pen to paper and saying, here are kind of the big timelines, at end of January here, we're going to start the budget process, kind of review with all the administrators, how their building level budgets or department budgets are doing, and determine allocations based on funding, and since it's the first year of a biennial, state biennial budget, that is always a moving target, so that's the fun juggling act I get to play this year of scenarios, what our funding will be in total, and then kind of allocations as well, but the main thing for the board is kind of the key dates of when you can expect info from me and the administration, April twenty first, year-to-date versus how our, our original budget, that's when our revision will come, and that'll kind of be the, okay, what is our excess or surplus, hopefully, that we have for one-time projects towards year-end for twenty four, twenty five? Kind of mid-June, the first kind of viewing of what the preliminary twenty five, twenty six budget is after working with administration, building level, budget managers, and staff to say, okay, here's what that's looking like. And then a early July approval of a preliminary budget, but all in that meantime, there's going to be conversations, meetings, and initiatives happening as, like, staff compensation, kind of safety, and all those kind of being folded into one culminating document of the budget. And then once that preliminary budget's approved, then it's, okay, what changes are going to happen as our pupil counts happen, and our October fifteenth state aid numbers come out, and the revenue limit, and then it's just another cycle, and we do it again the next year. So we're always kind of closing one, monitoring one, and developing one all at the same time. It's a fun process, and we appreciate all the input that the board and the other administrators give to the business office in this time, and kind of what the new spending is, and kind of how we get to incorporate that into a formula that's never funded as much as it should be. We appreciate that, and just kind of outlining the timelines and what those key dates, April, June, and July, that the board can expect info in kind of a more formalized presentation from me.
This is super helpful. Thank you. Do you know when the state is finalizing the spec ed reimbursement percentage? There were talks last week that it went down a little bit.
Yep, right now, it's trending at about twenty nine percent.
Yeah, okay.
Based on increased spending in special ed. The number for next year, it will formally be finalized, I believe, with the June eight payment, so not until the very end of the year. But right now, it's trending at twenty nine percent, when they were supposed to be at thirty three, so.
If they did the biennial budget and something addressed that categorical aid, would it be for twenty five, twenty six, or do you think it would?
Yep, twenty five, twenty six.
It would be for the twenty five, twenty six year?
Yep.
Okay.
So that's a number that I get to estimate, estimate watch at the ear to the ground and say, what are everybody hearing? And kind of incorporate that into our projections and plan.
Any questions for Derek?
Oh, I do, since we're talking about categorical aids, this was coming up at the convention. There is the per pupil categorical aid.
Yep.
And then there's special ed categorical aid.
Yep.
Which of those two factor into our revenue limits, or do they not at all?
Don't they both?
That was the confusion.
So.
They're separate buckets.
They both do indirectly, but none of them directly hit the revenue limit calculation.
Okay.
So per pupil categorical aid is a categorical aid outside of the revenue limit formula, but its impact becomes a deductible receipt, which impacts our general aid number, which impacts our revenue limit formula and our tax.
The tax levy at the end.
Revenue limit minus state aid equals levy, that would impact the state aid variable in that formula.
Okay.
Same with special ed categorical aid, that would increase our transfer from fund ten to twenty seven, which is an expenditure in ten, and we get aided on our expenditures, so if that goes up or down, again, that indirectly impacts state aid the next year, so it kind of, both of them indirectly impacted the following.
So obviously, our community loves state aid, right, and loves having less of a levy going on, but what you're going to be looking for is kind of both a raise in the revenue limit going with the spec ed categorical aid because of that interplay? Or do we really, are we really only focused on the spec ed categorical?
I'm focused on it all as a picture, because if it's outside the revenue limit, it doesn't mean it's not additional dollars we need to spend.
Okay.
So I'm trying to weigh that factor as well and say, okay, if it's more funding in fund twenty seven, which is our special ed fund, how does that then impact our transfer from fund ten and its impact on the overall operational dollars in fund ten? So how do all those interplay, and also hoping that the state legislature gives us an increase to the revenue limit formula and the overall funding?
Thank you.
We'll see.
We can always hope for it.
We can always hope.
We're hopefully optimistic at this point.
And that does sound very optimistic for you. We could wager the percent on spec ed that we, we think we're going to get, but five percent might be really exciting.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Derek. Okay, district business personnel, we'll just split these up a little bit.
It's all right, we can do them all, one by one, if you want.
Well, we could do, let's, do I have a motion to approve seven point one to seven point three?
So.
Second. And we are approving our administrator contracts, thank you, admin team, for your service, and thank you to Barb Foster, who gave her retirement, thanks for all her years of service, and then exciting hire for Elizabeth in her service. Any other questions, comments, hearing done, Isaiah?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Dylan?
Yep.
All right, I have a guess, tell me. And then, like Michelle said, we want to make sure that we're following process and procedure. So we're going to table seven point four and seven point five to next meeting. I'm confident that conversation can transpire and maybe get something posted in the meantime, and I don't know how the club is organized, but maybe even there's a separation of middle school, six, eight, do they do that? No?
But, but we'll see, we'll continue to talk about it.
Yep.
Perfect, so thanks again, Joe, for coming, and thanks again, too, to Andy and Cody for their enthusiasm for the trap club.
Can I ask a question quick? I see that we, that they talked about switching, because there isn't thought that Cody was not going to be in the head coach.
No, because we had to actually officially register it with the head, no, they decided Andy was going to be there.
Okay, and so with that, we'll move on, and do I have a motion?
Do we need Barb, do we need to take a motion to table this?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't, I forgot to do that.
This is action.
But we do have a motion, so.
Uh, to table it?
Yeah.
Uh, no, but I will make a motion to table it.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Okay, thanks, Isaiah.
Yep.
Would you like to say yes?
Yes.
Okay, Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yep.
I vote yes as well. So then we'll need a new motion to combine seven point six and seven point seven.
So I know I need a motion, but it, it says hire, but it says volunteer as well. Is hire a paid? I look at as hire as a paid position, I just want to make sure I'm.
No, there's no money involved.
Okay, I just see the word hire, and it seems like a paid position.
We hire volunteer coaches as well, and this is, as we are co-curricular, one big co-curricular family, they're like volunteer coaches.
All right, then I will make a motion.
Put some more formal stamp on their place.
I just wanted to make sure, so I will make a motion, yes.
Okay, perfect, and so we're welcoming Anjella and Jay as volunteers and helping out our spring musical, which is great. Any questions? Hearing done, Isaiah?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yeah.
I vote yes as well. All right, eight point one, do I have a motion to approve early release, a day for middle school, high school students, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, for prom preparation?
I will make that motion, because I don't want to see a full house of students here. I'll second.
So this may settle some debate, too, on when is prom set, and how is it determined, and the date, and has that been settled for next year then, student count, like, what is, because obviously, this maybe would have been something pre-determined.
So now, we're, we're looking at next year's schedule as to how to make that work, and that plays into some of the PD, we're like, looking at days and things like that, so I don't know what they did before.
Right.
But they didn't.
Exactly, why, because I'm asking.
So this year just became a conundrum, because there wasn't any logical date, but we are talking about that for next year.
Okay.
But that plays into all that.
Yeah, perfect.
Because you do have to make those decisions earlier.
So that would just be a calendar change, a moment or so, when it's.
Yeah.
Sounds good, any other questions? Hearing done, Isaiah?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Dylan?
Yep.
I vote yes as well. Nine point one, open enrollment, do I have a motion to approve the twenty five, twenty six open enrollment caps for regular and spec ed students?
So moved, second.
Okay, and Dale, Kelly, do you want to just talk about, in general, how we arrive maybe at the caps, or do you have specific questions to explain?
I have a comment.
Oh, okay, a comment, okay, do you want to make a question?
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, like we did last year, we leave cap, open, you know, for K twelve, we have space available, but for our four K program, limited space there, just because of our enrollment, we're anticipating similar numbers we've had consistently in the last ten years, and just throwing in space.
And for special education, we look at the needs of students and do kind of a weighted caseload model, where we think about the needs and then what an actual caseload would look like for a special education staff member or for our related service providers, and we look at it in just a variety of ways, numerically and with a weighted formula, because not all students or IEPs are equal.
Well, I know that I've had a lot of people come up to me this last year about four K open enrollment not being policy. This year, I know we've gotten some emails about it as board members, too, and I so wish we could have open enrollment for four K. I so agree with the idea that if you are already open enrolling a student to K through twelve with us, that it is logical for a family to then also think that our community will, will welcome with open arms to four K'er. And, you know, I think over the last year, we've had this conversation, and we've had Dale and Michelle, and I know Derek's been a part of it, and Kelly, our admin team, looking into ways to make it possible. We had a whole discussion about four K just a few months ago, and for anybody watching online after this is posted, which hopefully some folks will, it's just a, a crossroads of three bad state policies. And I know that there's three of us signed up to go advocate at the state Capitol now, we might get more board members in March, but it's three bad state policies that just really put our district in a bind, where four K students aren't treated as full-time students, even though we treat them like that here, for state aid and that open enrollment transaction as well. The borders of our district are weird, because they used to be willy-nilly, but since the funding system was set up three decades ago, they've been set in stone, and now they're really hard to change, and then just the funding system in general, we don't have the ability to take from here and there and everywhere to fund four K extra, we have the rest of the district to take care of. And it sets us up for a really hard decision, so I hope that, if anybody's watching, taking the time to listen in of why we're making the same decision this year, it's not because we haven't heard anybody, it's not because we haven't looked into trying to make it work, it's just our community is stuck at this crossroads, and we need some change from the state level to make that possible. And we should get that, because that four K education is critical for those kiddos, right? And we want your families in our district, so we'll try to do what we can.
Well, and I think, too, above and beyond that, it's one of the worst parts about this job, is we can't always do what we want to do, and learning about the stressors on the operations and on the, the teaching and our space and facility, and just the whole host of things that going to open enroll would put on the system in place. It's like one of those hard decisions where we had to say no, and that doesn't mean, I don't have an email, I say I want that, you know, the people yearning for their kids to be bankards that already have family members here, it's, it in common sense.
Right.
I, yes, that makes sense, but there's also a side that unfortunately, you know, we have to vote no, so unfortunate, but thank you for your work in that. Any questions, Isaiah or Angie, any other here?
No, no questions.
No questions.
Perfect, okay, hearing done, we'll take a vote, Isaiah?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Ten point one, do I have a motion to approve donations with a total amount of thirteen hundred fifty dollars to go towards the negative food balance?
So moved, a second.
And then just shout out again to the meat raffle that was done at the shack, a couple of these are coming in, it's residual to that effort, and then I noticed the Lions Club is in there, too, which is awesome. So thanks again to everybody in the community for their donations, it was awesome to see. Isaiah?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Dylan?
Yeah.
I vote yes as well. And then, just to throw out, we will have a facility meeting, February tenth at five P M, to go over another RFP for the entrance, so mark that on your calendars. And then we'll also be looking to do a workshop sometime in February, so if anybody's out of the country. Maribath, oh, you're out of the country. Actually, she's in straight out of state, yeah, so we'll be able to scheduling that. So, on that note, I'll take a motion to adjourn to executive session. So, uh, on that note, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
A second.
Uh, Isaiah?
Yes.
Um, Angie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yep.
Dylan?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so we are adjourning to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight one, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. After the executive session is completed, the board will reconvene to public session.